I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting for County of Starr, Tuesday, October 15th, that the record show that we do have quorum, everyone being present. I want to welcome everyone and thank you all for being here. If anyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
There's none, Your Honor.
Okay, first item is approval of minutes.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second. Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Abose. Motion carries. Next item is the vendor's list, sentence.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second. Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Abose. Motion carries. And then the claims, sentence.
The decision move, Your Honor.
Second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Abose. Motion carries. Before we start with our reports, if it's okay with the court, we have a couple of presentations that need to be done. We'll move on to the first one, which is item number eight, and this is a presentation by Garland Company. Please identify yourself for the record.
Absolutely. My name is James Bartoviac. I am the local territory manager for the Garland Company. Is there a way that I could connect a PowerPoint up here?
Where are the IDs?
If not, I can just go off of this. Really no worries.
Should we have an issue on the table?
I'll just go off of this, don't worry about it. There's only two pretty pictures, I assure you. The rest is just going to be me blabbering, so no worries.
Okay.
Going to go over who the Garland Company is, the services that we offer to public entities, different roofing systems that we manufacture, and a few project examples that we'll skip over for this. The Garland Company is a full-service manufacturer of building envelope products. Building envelope encompasses everything from roofing to wall sealants, exterior masonry sealants, that sort of thing. The easiest way to think of the products that we manufacture is we manufacture products in the United States that are made to keep the outside out and the inside in. As I mentioned, 95% of our products are manufactured in the United States. That 5% is a coatings company that is manufactured out of Canada. So we're still in North America. The Garland Company was founded in 1895. We're based out of Cleveland, Ohio. 100% employee-owned, meaning that every employee that has any liability in the project is fully vested, right? If there's ever any issues with a Garland roof, I pay for it, right? The warranty comes out of my pocket. So I'm fully vested in the success of the project from the get-go. A few services we offer: inspections, leak response, roof assessments, budgeting, capital planning, and project management, right? I like to say, "We take the roofing hat and we put it on for you, give you all of the necessary information to make the most appropriate roofing decisions for the county." Bid documents, right? So say we come a time where we need to replace the roof on the courthouse. We're going to take a look at the current condition of the roof, let it kind of tell us why it's failed, right? What's wrong with it? Is there no slope? Is, you know, mineral loss? And then we're going to design a roof that best fits the building. And we're going to help you guys by preparing specifications, project documents, schematics, all that good stuff. And then we're onsite three days a week monitoring installation, because as I previously mentioned, there's only one liability holder in a Garland roof, and that's ourselves, right? We put all the work up front in the bid documents to protect you guys, the client, and ourselves ultimately, as we hold the liability. How we're different, okay? We're not a consultant. There's no fees associated with our services. We don't charge a percentage of the project. We're not a local roofer, right? We are a manufacturer. We partner with local roofing contractors who are vetted and approved and that perform at the highest standard, right? As I mentioned, we're holding warranties for up to 40 years. We have 40-year no-dollar limit warranties. We have to make sure that we have the highest quality of contractor installing that roof, right? There's really four aspects to designing a roof. It's property design, application, products, and oversight. Which of those four are you willing to compromise, right? None of them, obviously. And then I was going to go over a few of our previous products, just to ballpark it, right? We have a product for every roof. We have roof restorations, which will save up to 45% on tear-offs. And that's where we come in with, "Hey, this roof is a candidate for restoration now. If we wait another two years, your cost is going to potentially triple, and you're going to have to tear off this whole roof and replace it." And as I mentioned, our job is to give you guys all of the necessary tools and information to make the most informed and financially sound decisions for the county. Any questions on our services? There you go. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And I guess you're here to present because of the leaks that we have at the annex?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay. Yes, and just for information for the court, I think you talked to Ms. Gerra about this, and I asked that you come and present to the court. Of course, you know, we, if it's over $50,000, we would have to go out for bids, but we do need to fix it. We've had several roofers that have gone and tried to fix it, but the area around the dome still continues to leak.
Yes, sir.
So we need some help there.
And that's where we really come in. We look at the whole building envelope, right? There's walls associated with that. There's tile surface on the top. There's roofing substrate that needs that. And that's where we come in, to take the big-picture approach, right? And you mentioned three bids. That's what we do, right? You say, "Hey, it's going to be finished in $55,000." We write an appropriate scope of work, and then we give that scope of work into the hands of our own approved contractors, ensuring that we have the highest quality contractor getting the job, and that everybody's getting apples to apples on a repair that we know is going to fix the solution first time.
Okay. Now, if we choose to go with your company, and the bids come in where we feel they're not what we're looking for, it doesn't mean that we need to go with any one of them.
Correct. Because there's no...
Obligation.
There's no contract. There's no obligation on your end whatsoever.
Okay. Well, okay, well, thank you so much for your presentation.
Absolutely.
It sure is enlightening. And we'll discuss it, and we'll get back with you.
Your Honor, didn't when we replaced all that roof together with the appraisal decision, did it have a 10-year warranty?
I don't know, but the company that we've had, you know, we brought in a second one and then a third one, and apparently they go back to the original roofer, which was, I don't know how long ago, but it's been more than 10 years. So we've tried, and I think the legal expense to go after it would probably be more than the repairs that are needed. But we'll see. You know, we'll see what the bids look like. Okay. Thank you so much for your time. The other presentation that we have is item number nine, and this is a presentation from Techstat on project updates.
All right, good morning. I'm Danny Flores. I'm the new Roma area engineer for Techstat. I did request that Mr. Lopez get with the staff. First of all, I want to thank you all for making the time for having us. Judge, Commissioners, thank you all this morning. Just a quick introduction to myself. I wanted to formally introduce myself to the Court of Rio Grande and Starr. I'm Danny Flores. I've been with the department for a little bit north of 10 years already. All of my experience has been in construction. I'm here, I'm really excited to work with you all, to work with the staff, address any community concerns. One of the reasons why I wanted to show up also was to provide you all updates on the ongoing work and on the upcoming work. So before I go on to the project updates, just a quick oversight of the new road I'm going to have. I have been the Roma area engineer for approximately a month or so. I will have oversight over Starr, also Zapata, Brooks, Jim Hogg, and those are the counties I'm going to be overseeing. As far as project updates, I did want to bring a few updates to the court. As far as ongoing work, we have the US-83 project that's in the final phases right now that extends from the county line, it's about the county line, to 2098, the southern leg of 2098. That one's in the final phases. The contractor, IOC, is starting to wrap up that one. We're about to close out within the next two to three months. We have commenced work on the US-83, second phase of the Starr Divided Highway project. That one's from Margarito Road to Roma Blanca Road. Have you all been north towards Falcone? We have started work there. The contractor is at about 5% barely. They're prepping right away. They're still relocating utilities, but there has been some work being done there already. And then the third project, the third big project, right, is FM-755. The contractor foremost paving has commenced work there. That one will not be divided highway, will have a super two, a pavement structure from FM-1017 to FM-2294. So there's a lot of work that's going on right now in Starr County. Other than that, one of the smaller-scale jobs is the overlay. We do have an overlay scheduled for Starr County on US-83 from Charco Blanco to 3167. That one's due to commence around the first week of November or so. That's what I got for ongoing work. As far as upcoming work that we have for Starr County, we have the FM-650. That one's due for letting in September of 2025. It's approximately two miles long from the industrial park to US-83. Then we have the State Loop 195s, so the majority of the chunk of money is coming to those jobs. We recently had a congressman grant hearing here that I attended, where I went into detail as far as the dollar amounts that are being invested into Starr County for these three major roadway construction jobs. The first section is the first phase from 755 to 649. That one is due for letting. That one actually got moved two months forward, so it's going to do...
That one's from 755 to 3167?
To 3167. That one's due for letting two months sooner than it was projected to let. It's due for letting in June of 2025. Then the second phase, 3167, that one is due for letting in November of 2025. That one also got pushed forward. That one's from 3167 to 649. As far as the smaller-scale jobs, we still have the CO projects that are coming next year as well. Mr. Lopez, I'm accompanied by Mr. Lopez, Maintenance Section Supervisor. He's currently prepping some of the roadways and getting them ready to get CO-coded. One of the roads that will get CO-coded in the year 2025 is FM-1017 from 755 to the Jim Hogg County Line. And that's for CO codes. As far as some of the other smaller-scale jobs, we do have the sidewalk project. That one's in front of the Roma High School. It extends from the Roma High School to Gutierrez Street. That one's due for letting in April of 2025. And then last but not least, we got the Roma Blanca Bridge replacement. That one's due for letting in January of 2025. It's going to be a busy end of the year for 2024 with Techstat. It's going to be a busier 2025, but we're really looking forward to continue working on these projects, bringing in that extra revenue and economic expansion to Starr County. And we're really looking forward to working with the Court of Starr County as well. That's all I got as far as project updates and my formal introduction. I'm open to any questions regarding construction or maintenance as well with Mr. Lopez.
Sure, I have one. Where are you at with the new study from 83 on the east side to hook up to 755? Where are we at?
So are you referring to State Loop 195?
No. What you're doing from 755 to 2367 and to Roma Blanca?
Yeah.
That should be the, apparently the escape route or the loop. And what we always stay, stayed here, that we were supposed to start up here, east of Rio Grande City, on the other side of La Puerta to go and connect to 755.
So I do have an update in regards to...
We started the wrong way, you know? We're trying to alleviate the problem, the flow of traffic coming from the valley, and we started at the other end.
Yeah. So I do have an update in regards to that, Commissioner. So as we have it right now, we have the three sections, right, the three phases?
I understand, I understand, but you know...
Now, I, if...
Go ahead.
Yeah. No, go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, that project was designed to eliminate the traffic coming in case of a hurricane and all this kind of stuff, and we started on the opposite end.
As far as construction is phased out, we're starting in Rio Grande and then working ourselves up north.
Yeah, yeah, but...
Now, we do have a feasibility study that was just conducted about two weeks ago with a consultant. They're already starting to look into the topography and how it's laid out so we can connect what we call the fourth section of State Loop 195 from 755 to US-83.
Yeah, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we also are looking, or you all are looking at possibly running the relief route to Harachinas, is that correct?
That's out of our jurisdiction, but we'd be more than glad to look into it.
Yeah, because that's what I believe we had been told, that that would be the ultimate plan, is to have another east-west route. And of course, that would be taken off from where the loop ends and going all the way down to where the new loop is around La Juega, which is at Harachinas Loop. Am I correct, Fred?
Yes, yes, yes. That's a future outlook of connecting Starr County with Hidal County, through Harachinas, to cross over the pipeline road, but that's still...
Yeah, way in the future, but that would be the ultimate.
Yeah. We'll provide you all an update in regards to that.
Yeah, and that's fine, you know, but the problem that we have right now at this point in time is that one connector from 83 to 755 to relieve the traffic going that way.
So we did have a feasibility study that was already conducted about two or three weeks ago. It's already in the works as well.
Yeah, and the reason for that is that, and I'm sure you all are aware, the congestion that we have for the new roadway for the tractor supply, the new tractor supply is, the congestion we have there is horrible, you know? And I believe that, you know, I agree with Commissioner Garza, if we would start off further to the east, that would alleviate that congestion, but I realize that we have U.S. Fish and Wildlife that is causing a problem as far as going through their game preserve.
Yeah, and like we stated, the Fish and Wildlife has some property there, but the border wall just went right through it with no problem whatsoever. They just want to cross the refuge and everything, no questions asked. I don't see what's different here in this project.
No, as far as the border wall, we don't handle the border wall, Commissioner.
I understand. What I'm trying to say is Fish and Wildlife is giving Techstat a hard time to go through. And here, to go through the border wall, no questions asked, just they do it. And we're in the same state, and we have the same governor for all the piece of property.
But we'll look into the update as far as the feasibility study for that fourth section, and we'd be more than glad to update you all.
Okay. Well, you know, and I do want to thank you for coming by and giving us an update. You know, we realize that 2025, we're going to have a lot of work going on in the county, and that's going to cause, you know, for the people that are watching, some inconvenience, but the end product would be a lot better for everyone.
That is correct, Judge. And at the end of the day, I mean, it's a minor inconvenience for now, but thinking about the big picture moving forward, it's for the traveling public, and it's for the benefit of the community as well. And it's not just about the economy or what it does to Starr County's economy, it's also about what it does to the transportation system and how we enhance the safety of these roadways.
Any questions or any other comment? Well, again, thank you all so much for taking time. Yes, sir.
Just real quick update. We're going to have an overlay from 3167 to Charco Blanco, starting here close to the end of the month. So there's going to be night work there happening, milling operations and paving operations. And then, starting tomorrow, the intersection for 755 and US-83 at the Chick-fil-A, they're going to start removing the railroad planks, and they're going to redo the whole section. They're going to remove the concrete barrier that we have in the middle. So they're going to be working 24 hours, 24 hours till they finish that work. So it's going to be a little bit of headache, you know, if you get complaints. You know, it's the same thing with the railroad, the railroad that they fixed on 1430, they went ahead and they finished like five days, you know, prior to they were supposed to. They did it within four or five days. So that's the same thing that's going to happen over here, but they're just going to remove the planks, resurface, repave everything, and redesign the intersection, that part of the intersection. So if you all get complaints, it's going to have to start tomorrow into the weekend. They're going to work through the weekend.
Where is it going to be at?
Right next to Chick-fil-A, that intersection.
Okay. Is that Techstat doing the work, or is it private contractor?
It's a contractor through Techstat.
How long is that going to take?
There it is.
It's, we're hoping that it don't take more than five days into the weekend.
Mr. Lopez, I think you guys need to make sure those contractors, because they didn't have traffic control there at that time, because people coming from 2260, it was a long line, both on 83, and they couldn't get through.
Yes, and it's understood, Commissioner Garza, because we checked out the traffic control, we updated traffic control, we added more signs to the traffic control, and let the people know in advance. We're, you know, putting it out on Facebook, putting it out...
Yeah, I understand, but they should have been a person there stopping the traffic so these people could get on 1430 on 83, and they have nobody.
They had flaggers, they had flaggers there, and I was there, and I was a witness to it. We had flaggers, and people still went through the traffic control because I'm a citizen, but...
But there was no traffic control when you started there.
Yeah, it's understood. They did have flaggers. They did have flaggers. And then sometimes they have to rotate the flaggers. They can't be out there more than two hours at a time, they have to rotate them. So no, we're keeping an eye on that, on the traffic control, and we're just asking patience from the traveling public. You know, it's a construction headache, and hopefully we get it done before the weekend, early next week, before the holidays come around. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate you all the time. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else that needs to come before the court at this time before we start with our reports?
I don't know. Where can we put the...
Gotcha, gotcha. Oh, yes, sir.
Item 10.
Oh, okay. Item 10 is an action item to approve or proclamation for scan, proclaiming Red Ribbon Week.
Good morning, Judge and esteemed Commissioners. Red Ribbon Week, which is celebrated annually October 23rd through the 31st, is the nation's oldest and largest drug prevention awareness program. Red Ribbon Week was started after the death of DEA agent, Special Agent Enrique Quique Camarena, who in 1985 was brutally tortured and murdered by traffickers. He was investigating in Mexico. As a tribute to Quique Camarena, a high school friend, Henry Lozano, and Congressman Duncan Hunter created Camarena Clubs and the Wearing of Red Ribbon to Share Their Opposition of Drugs. In 1988, the NFP coordinated the first National Red Ribbon Week with President Reagan, serving as honorary chairperson. Since then, the Red Ribbon Campaign has taken on national significance. The NFP continues to coordinate the campaign for families, schools, and communities, communities like ours, across the nation each year. Wearing red ribbons during the month of October continues to represent the pledge to live drug-free and honors the sacrifice of Quique Camarena, who have, and all the others who have lost their lives against the fight against drugs. We encourage everyone to celebrate Red Ribbon Week in our community and to raise awareness of living a drug-free life. Take the opportunity to talk to the youth in your lives about the risk and consequences of using and misusing drugs. At this moment, we thank Judge Vera for his continuous support of the Starr County Community Coalition. We also want to thank him for the proclamation he has passed every other year. This year, he has already recorded the proclamation for RGC GIST's kickoff, and we thank you for all the help that you do to help us prevent drug use and misuse in our communities.
Well, thank you so much for coming over and certainly for the work that you all do. I think it doesn't need any saying that we do have a big problem with drugs, not only in our community or in Starr County, but throughout the border and really throughout the nation. And it's thanks to people like yourself and your organization that we're able to keep a handle on it, so your work doesn't go unnoticed, and we thank you for what you do.
And thank you. And yes, at that moment, we want to let you know that the trending drugs that we do still have in Starr County is the number-one drug that is abused and misused by alcohol and adult is alcohol, because of course, the easy accessibility and our easy accessibility to the laws to Mexico. We also have a big vaping problem that seems to, instead of decreasing, it's increasing. We see it at the schools, and we're seeing prescription drug misuse and use. We're seeing a big fentanyl problem. We're so thankful that we haven't had the outcome that every other county around us has. We've had overdoses that are reporting to us at all times of the moment, but here, thankfully, we haven't had that problem. We hope that it stays like that. But again, we know that it's because of the efforts that you all help us do in the community. Ms. Cynthia is very active in our coalition, invites us, she's everywhere we ask her to be. And of course, the Sheriff Department, the PD, we thank them for everything because we couldn't do it alone. It's only two of us at our office, but we're able to do all of that we do because of the help that you all give us.
Thank you so much. And yes, it does take a village for this type of problems. So I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the proclamation.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in fair, please say aye. Abose. Motion carries. And again, thank you.
So we will take the picture.
So we're done with it. We have another proclamation of failure.
Okay. Let me go on to item number 11, and this is to approve a proclamation recognizing Starr County as an age-friendly community. I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce your last name, Doctor, but if you would identify yourself from UTRGV.
Yeah. Okay. I am Sudhoshan Possipulati. I'm a professor at UTRGV School of Social Work, and on my personal behalf and School of Social Work, UTRGV behalf, I thank the county, Starr County, for the consideration of an age-friendly community. Especially Honorable Judge Vera and the county commissioners, we thank you for considering the proclamation. With a small community engagement grant in 2020, this initiative of Age Friendly RGV Initiative has been designed and is going around for the past two, three years. And this initiative, so far, we have secured proclamation from other three counties in RGV region, Hidal County, Starr Cameron County, and Villasee County. And you are the county, you are considering that, and we are very glad to see that initiative moving forward. And this initiative is initiated to foster and facilitate age-friendly environment in RGV region in general, an environment that respects values, cares, engages, and includes older adults in every sphere of community life through inclusive infrastructure, policies, workplaces, and health and social services. And we are very proud that RGV is moving as a region in this direction to proclaim, because in the state of Texas, a region moving in this direction is no other region, has done it. Cities have done it, but not as a region. With this unique identity here in South Texas and in RGV, and we are going to become a model for the, not only for the state, but also for the rest of the country. This is a movement that started in 2005 when WHO, World Health Organization, in one of the conferences held in Brazil, they came up with the concept of age-friendly network and age-friendly environment. network and age-friendly environment. And now that network has grown into, spread into 1,600 cities all over the world in 53 countries, and which covers almost like 330 million people worldwide. So we are part of that kind of initiative promoting age-friendly environment for the population who are 55 plus according to AARP, that also is supporting the age-friendly network now. So we have several states and counties and cities which have already embraced age-friendly framework, and they're proclaimed as age-friendly cities. And a lot of work that will follow after the proclamation, because it's a commitment that the cities or the counties are making, and you will be shaping your policies and programs so that, you know, they are, every component, everything that you are doing, you will be doing with a consideration of whether it is going to benefit the older adults in the community, and how we can make their needs addressed through your initiatives. That is the kind of approach the county will be adapting. And this is a unique opportunity for county and for city, so that you can shape the environment for the future, future generations also. And so that is the request we have for you, and urging the county to consider age-friendly proclamations, so that you can not only join the region, RGV region, as the county that has embraced this framework, but also you are joining the national movement and worldwide movement. And that's all from my side, and if there are any questions, I'll be able to answer. And also, UTRGV School of Social Work is willing to work with the counties and cities to provide whatever the technical assistance or research support, other supports that you need in moving forward this agenda and framework.
Well, first of all, Doc, thank you so much for taking time to be here and to, I guess, make us aware of such a proclamation. I don't remember signing one before, so I do want to thank you and, of course, UTRGV for initiating this, and also to thank UTRGV for the great partnership that it has in our community. You know, we certainly appreciate that. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the proclamation.
Please move, Your Honor. Take it.
Moved in second. Any further discussion or comments? If not, all in fair, please. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Someone else that needs to come before the court? If not, we'll go back to our regular agenda. First name is the clerk, Mr. Gonzalez.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Our report's in front of you. Just going to kind of highlight a couple of items. Our records management collected 5506, copies 148760. Our records archive was 5349. Total due to the general and county clerks was 14,5460, and a total due to the treasurer was 28,52560. And this is ending the year for the fiscal 2023, '24. A little slower than anticipated. We normally average about $32,000, $33,000 a year, but we anticipate for stuff to move up here come October. Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Star County Sheriff?
Good morning, Your Honor, Commissioners, Court.
Good morning.
This is the revenue report for September 2024. We're showing AUSS Solutions at 1,500, Marshal Transport Services at 10,154, Medical Services at 1,020, Marshal Services for Housing Im inmates 261,135, Hidal County Sheriff's Office 134, $912 for a total revenue of 408,921. The account for October the 1st, 2024 was 131 federal inmates, 69 Hidalgo, and 85 Star County inmates for a total housing of 285. The average for federal inmates for the month of September was 138 Federals, 73 Hidalgo. We show a difference of, from September 2023 to September 2024, of an additional $41,770 more than last year. So this is the end of year, fiscal year. We're showing a total revenue collection at 4,943,771, and that is an additional $460,170 more than last year, and an excess revenue of $693,771 for the year. That is my report, Your Honor.
Certainly, detention did extremely well, and we thank you for your job.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions or comments? Hopefully this year will be the same.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. International Bridge?
Good morning. This is the report for September 2024. We have a total revenue from traffic. It's 256,479.50, and we show an increase of $30,923.50 for the month of September 2023 compared to the month of September 2024. And we show a decrease of $6,086 on collections for the month of September 2024 compared to the month of August 2024. And we have the currency exchange. It's $136.41. And the grand collection for September 2024 is 256,615.91. And I do have a second page for this, that it's for the fiscal year of 2023, 2024. I have the comparisons, the difference between last year and this year. It's 237,000. That's an increase of $125.50. And on other collections, the year's wrong, it's supposed to read 2023, 2024, and the excess for this year was $804.58. And the grand total for the year of 2023, 2024 was 2,793,333.8. Do you have any questions?
Just, you know, the bridge did extremely well also this year, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. This is my report for ending month of September 2024. You just follow along with me. We have the ending balance for the general fund at 2,988,229.56. The road and bridge, the ending balance is at 321,192.72. The enterprise funds, they are, the ending balance is at 1,925,45.72. The drainage district, the ending balance is at 3,980,808.52. The INS funds, they are at 1,873,952.41, which brings the grand total of all funds to 11,89228.93. And that is my report.
Any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. And, you know, you asked to be tabled.
Yes, I want to give my report.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to table the tax collector and the auditor's report.
Please move, Your Honor.
Moved in second. Discussion. All in fair, please. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Moving on with our agenda, we have a couple of subdivisions for approval. The first one is for final approval, and this is Coyote Dan Phase Four subdivision.
Yes, good morning. We have final approval on Coyote Dan Phase Four, in precinct three.
Is that there? Or in La Victoria?
Everything's ready. The plat has been signed by the.
Did he get that water?
Everything is signed already by the. He paid all his dues and everything.
Okay, and it's been approved by.
Mm-hmm.
And this one?
Moved in second to approve. Discussion. All in fair, please. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 13 is also a plat, but this is preliminary.
Yes, Los Agaves subdivision is in precinct four, and we're asking for preliminary.
Please move. Take it.
Moved in second to approve. Discussion. All in fair, please. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 14 is an action item, is to approve a contractor lease for a new copier and maintenance agreement with Total Imaging Solutions. Is it for federal and state programs?
I second, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve. Discussion. All in fair, please. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 15 is an action item, is to approve the treasurer's report on the investment.
Yes, Judge, Commissioners, this is my report for the investment report for the fourth quarter fiscal year 2023, 2024. The total investment portfolio in CDs at the end of September 30th, 2024, was at 3,627,516.21. The overall interest earned for the fourth quarter was at 36,798.38, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve. Discussion. Under discussion, Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, sir.
The general fund, and I know this has been there for years and years and years, it's not much, it's about $8,000 then.
Yes.
Monies that were left by JP precinct five, probably, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, it's been there since I was.
Yeah, well, I think it's been there since I was here.
Wow.
Is there any way that that could be moved into the general fund or somewhere?
I can check into that, Your Honor. Yeah, okay.
Because I know it's been there like forever.
Yes. We'll look into it.
Did I call for the vote?
Yes. Oh, no, no.
All in fair, please. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner. Item 16 is an action item, and this is to transfer some surplus equipment from the county auditor's office to precinct three, fire department.
Take it.
Moved in second. All in fair, please. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 17 is pretty much the same thing, and this is to move to the international bridge.
No, to move to the county auditor.
And that would be from the county auditor to the international bridge.
Right.
Please move, Your Honor. Take it.
Moved in second to approve. Discussion. All in fair, please. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 18 is to update our travel rates and per diem and lodging. Ms. Alonise?
And if you're going to cover the same rates, under rates, and you increase this $4. If you're just on the lodging and the meals.
Please move, Your Honor. Take it.
Moved in second. This is the same rates that the state asks, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? All in fair, please. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 19 is an action item, and this is to approve a resolution for the Indigent Defense Formula Grant. Ms. Alonise?
Please move.
Moved in second. Discussion. All in fair, please. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 20 is a action item, is to donate 4.11 acres of land on Riverbend subdivision. I don't think it's on Riverbend.
No, it's right next to it.
Yeah, what's the name of the?
What's the name of the subdivision? 20, the?
Riverwalk.
River what? Riverwalk.
Riverwalk, okay. We'll make that correction. On Riverwalk subdivision, by Commissioner Precinct One?
Please move, Your Honor.
Take it.
Moved in second. Discussion. And this is to improve the drainage in that area.
Yeah.
All in fair, please. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 21 is also an action item, and this is to move some surplus equipment from the county auditor's to precinct three.
Please move.
Moved in second. Discussion. All in fair, please. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. 22 is the same thing, different items?
From three to the auditor.
I'm sorry?
The way.
Oh, okay. Okay, this is to move from precinct three to the auditor's office.
Please move.
Moved in second. All in fair, please. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 23 is also to move from precinct three to the auditor's office. Is there a motion for that?
Please move.
Moved in second. Discussion. All in fair, please. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 24 through item 46 are budget amendments.
No, all amendments are original.
Motion to approve.
Moved in second to approve. Discussion. All in fair, please. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. 47 and 48 are budget corrections.
Please move.
Moved in second to approve. Discussion. All in fair, please. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. And it is now 10:51, and pursuant to section 551, point 074, we will go into executive session to discuss order of salaries and the ASO runoff claims. 704, and we're back in open session. The only items we have for discussion in executive was the order of salaries.
Please move.
Moved in second to approve. Order of salaries is presented. All in fair, please. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. And the other was the runoff on the ASO. And I guess we'll entertain a motion to move the remaining monies to the general fund.
Please move.
Moved in second. Discussion. All in fair, please. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. This is 705, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Please move. Take it.
Moved in second. All in fair, please. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries.